Okay, well, welcome to the August 11th Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start out. You join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll have a roll call of the Commissioners.
Mr. Ricucci.
Here.
Mr. Brenton.
Here.
Mr. Denio.
Here.
Mr. Severson.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here. Okay, report of the Planning Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Paul Thompson with Planning Services. Just to go over some things that happened at the Board on August 9th, that Board meeting, the staff was provided direction to cease consideration of the Kings Beach Beach Site and look at the alternative site at Cabin Creek. So, we're going to be looking at that. The Timberline at Auburn Project was approved by the Board of Supervisors, 5-0. There was a presentation on redistricting. And the Dry Creek West Placerville Transportation Update was considered by the Board. As far as future Planning Commission meetings, we're considering opportunities for workshops for the Homewood Project. Also, looking at the end of September potentially for a special meeting on Homewood. On September 8th, we're looking at items relating to the Alpine Meadows subdivision and a setback line modification, that's up in Alpine Meadows, up in Tahoe, and a parking variance up in Tahoe City, and then an extension of time of a temporary concrete batch plant. And that is all on September 8th. And then later on, in, at the end of the month, potentially a draft EIR hearing to receive comments on the Amazing Facts Project, that's a church in the Granite Bay area. And then, early October, looking at a workshop for the Granite Bay Community Plan Update. So, with that, that's kind of an outline of projects to come to your commission.
So, we don't have another one planned in August?
We're considering potentially having a workshop.
Okay, that would be the special workshop.
Yes. But, we're exploring opportunities on that, as well as at the beginning of September, too.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, any questions?
Homewood, the Homewood Project, just to get your commission up to speed on that project, the changes that have happened since the draft EIR was circulated. So, it's just to keep you updated on the project.
And we're trying to plan this one when it's not snowing?
We'll try to do that this time around.
Well, that wasn't a very nice comment, Mr. Chairman.
It was a long ride home.
Well, I mean, it wasn't his fault, after all. Or was it?
We got home, right?
Yeah, he got us home.
We did. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention on, I will not be attending the September 8th, I'll be on vacation.
Okay.
Just let the staff know that right up front.
Paul, you wouldn't set up a meeting where the only thing we did was that workshop, would you?
The reason I ask is sometimes I feel that, you know, it's almost a waste of money together, all of us together, and staff time, to have us come in and hear something like that workshop. You know, we all sat through the draft EIR comments, and we'll certainly have a nice discussion when the final comes up, and we all do our homework when those packages come in. But, you know, from an economic standpoint, it doesn't seem right to me to call us all together, pay us our $100 each, and plus the staff time to prepare, and then have a 15-minute presentation on Homewood.
Right, and I think with the September 8th Planning Commission meeting, there's a number of Tahoe items. It would probably make sense to have...
Yeah, fit it in there.
Yeah.
Rather than a special one.
So, we'll keep you posted on that.
You know, even today, when the one came in for today, and my wife and I were looking it over, she always looks over everything I do to make sure that I do the right thing, whatever that is. We have the significant issue here of the draft EIR to receive comments, and we have folks here who want to make these comments. And then she says, "Oh, I see they tagged on something else just to make it a little bit more worthwhile, the update on the conservation plan." Those always seem to be able to be fit in just about in any place, so, you know, my concern is that we at least exercise some degree of economics here. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for any comments that the public would like to make that aren't related to the topics on the agenda today. So, is there anybody that just has a comment on anything other than the two topics on the agenda today? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go ahead with our 10:05 item, which is dealing with a draft document on the Orchard Project in the Penrin Community Plan Area. And this, purpose of this meeting today is to hear a little bit about the project and the draft document, and to give anybody in the public that would like to make a verbal comment, a chance to comment on the draft. And you also will have the opportunity to mail in comments or write comments down today, and these will all be addressed in the final document as prepared. We will not be making a decision on this project today. Okay.
That's correct.
EJ, you're on.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. Yeah, as you mentioned, this public hearing is to provide the public an opportunity to provide comments on the draft EIR. The draft EIR was released July 14th, and it's also to address any questions the Commission may have about the project at this stage. This hearing, once again, is not the forum to discuss the merits of the project or the substance of the environmental analysis that will occur at a subsequent Planning Commission meeting. So, what I'd like to do, I'll start with an overview of the project, briefly discuss the content in the draft EIR, before I turn it back to you to open it up for public comment. So, this project site, a lot of you are familiar with it, it's 15 acres in area, it's located on the west side of Penrin Road, about a half mile north of Interstate 80. This is in the Penrin area. The northwest corner of the project site is located just next to Taylor Road, tips it right there. Surrounding land uses include rural residential properties to the west and north. The Hope Lutheran Church is right down in this area to the south of the property, and then there's parcels across Penrin Road that include a mix of both developed and undeveloped rural residential and commercial uses. The proposed project, it would like to develop 150 multifamily residential units, including onsite recreational facilities and a common open space area. The multifamily residential units would consist of three or six units per building. You can see those, some elevations of those buildings at the bottom of the map there, and there would be a total of 375, or parking spaces for 375 vehicles, the majority of those, which would be garage spaces. These multifamily residential units would be developed as residential condominiums, but may also be operated as a residential community. The onsite recreational facilities would include a 3,900 square foot Recreation Center with a leasing office, indoor fitness center, internet cafe, and also an outdoor pool and spa, and that is right in this area of the plan. Passive recreation areas, providing open turf areas, would be located throughout the project site. This is a colored map, so you can't really tell exactly where those are, but one of them includes a totlot play area located over here in the western area. So, primary access to the site is proposed through a gated entrance off of Penrin Road. Let me go back. This is right here along Penrin Road, and then there's going to be a secondary exit-only gated access point proposed at Taylor Road. This is at the back of the project site. Penrin Road itself is proposed to be widened to provide two southbound 12-foot travel lanes, a Class II bike lane, and curb gutter and sidewalk. The project would also be required to provide one-half of a center two-way left-turn lane. The project applicant has entered into a voluntary cleanup agreement with the California Department of Toxic Substances Control to remediate contaminated soil on the project site, which is a result of pesticide use associated with historic fruit orchards. The proposed site remediation, as outlined in the Removal Action Work Plan, would include excavation and transport of 11,600 cubic yards of contaminated soil from about seven acres of the project site, which is roughly half of the project site. Although site remediation requires a separate approval process with the state, the draft EIR has analyzed project impacts associated with both the site remediation and the proposed multifamily residential development. Site remediation and project development combined would result in impacts to about 6.4 acres of oak woodlands, one acre of riparian habitat, and just about a half acre, under a half acre of wetlands that exist on-site. The draft EIR only focused on the environmental resource areas where project impacts were determined to be significant or potentially significant, and in accordance with SEQA, environmental resources where it was determined that project impacts would be at a less-than-significant level, those resources were not evaluated and are listed up there under less-than-significant impacts. The draft EIR did identify significant and potentially significant impacts in 10 environmental resource areas, as noted on the slide. The majority of these impacts would be reduced to a level of less-than-significance with implementation of mitigation measures identified in the draft EIR. The proposed project would result in significant and unavoidable impacts in three resource areas. That includes visual resources, air quality, and transportation and circulation. As far as visual resources, the project site's visual character would substantially change as a result of the site remediation and project grading. Over 90% of the project site would be cleared of vegetation. The development of the 150-unit multifamily residential complex would further alter the existing visual character of the area. Although mitigation measures are proposed to reduce the overall visual impact, this includes a requirement for landscape building setbacks that exceed the zoning ordinance minimums, inclusion of a 30-foot wide landscape easement along Penrin Road, and the requirement for designer view, the visual impacts would remain significant and unavoidable. For air quality, these impacts would also remain significant and unavoidable. Urban mismodeling for the proposed project indicates that emissions would exceed the air pollution control district's thresholds during project construction and operation. Even with mitigation measures, impacts would remain significant and unavoidable, both from the project alone and because the project would make considerable contributions to cumulative pollutant concentrations. In regards to transportation and circulation, the proposed project would add traffic to two intersections in the town of Loomis that are already operating at a level of Service D and F in cumulative condition. Physical improvements could be constructed at the intersection of Taylor Road and King Road that would provide an acceptable level of service. However, there is no existing fee agreement between the town of Loomis and Placerville County through which a project applicant can make a fair share payment to fund these improvements. Mitigation would require the project applicant to make a good faith effort to pay the town of Loomis their fair share cost for these improvements. However, with no fee agreement in place, the impact would remain significant and unavoidable. Additionally, there is insufficient right-of-way to construct the physical improvements that would be necessary to provide acceptable level of service during the PM peak hours at the intersection of Taylor Road and Horseshoe Bar Road. This is the second intersection. Due to the lack of right-of-way to construct improvements, this impact is also considered significant and unavoidable. So, that provides just a, kind of a brief overview of what's in the draft EIR. Copies of that are available on our website if anybody in the public or attending today wants to do some further reading. Back to what we are here for today, to accept comments on the draft EIR. You can do that today here at the podium. You can also do that in writing, sending it to our Environmental Coordinating Services, to May Wong Crook. There's actually one address, email address, up on the screen, there's another, a different email address in the documents that were on the table that people might have. Either one of those will work to get your comments in. The deadline is 5 o'clock Monday, August 29th, to get the comments in. Anybody who provides comment, we will respond to those in the final EIR. So, that concludes, kind of, the overview, and I'll turn it back to you for your questions, or we can go ahead and open it up for comments.
Okay, any questions from the Commission?
Are you going to have the issue all logged there so the folks can sign in and get the ready to respond?
Thanks for bringing that up. We do, we have a log up here, whoever comes up to speak today, please put your name, address, whatever information's requested on there, and we will have a record of that and make sure you get a response.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, and as just mentioned, remember to write your name down and address on the sheet of paper beside you. And when you come up to the microphone, let us know who you are and where you're from. And so, with that, I'll open it up. You know, we're not going to have a discussion or make a decision today, but this is your opportunity to make comments on the draft EIR. So, whoever wants to step up first, go ahead. Looks like we don't have a full audience, so I won't restrict the time, but try and hold your comments to less than three minutes.
Karen Clifford, Penrin, I have a question. With all of the transportation impact, is there a place, a plan in place to expand the Penrin 80 interchange when that is raised in 2013?
You know, I think, I probably won't be able to answer your question today, but you asked it, so it will be answered in the document.
Okay, I mean, the impact does not address the freeway interchange.
Okay, that's your comment.
Yes.
Okay, next one, don't be shy.
Good morning, my name is Gary List, a town council member from the town of Loomis and on the Borders Committee for the town of Loomis. Wanted to be here today to underscore the concerns that we addressed in our comments to be addressed in the EIR, and those were in particular dealing with traffic and other issues. On the traffic side, to find that the EIR finds are the traffic issues to be substantial and unavoidable is not acceptable to the town of Loomis, and we will be sending comments. This is an issue that we've had to address with our neighbors, the south of us, with Rockland, on their development projects, are very concerned about how your impacts will impact our residents and businesses. You heard from the prior comments that the intersections at Taylor and King and Taylor and Horseshoe Bar Road are of particular concern to us, and we encourage you to work with the town of Loomis to develop a fee agreement to address mitigation that could bring this to be mitigated in terms of the traffic impacts in Loomis, or to consider as a project alternative in the EIR, a reduced-scale project that would bring the traffic impacts lower than the impacts that are indicated in the current and make them less than significant. So, basically, reduce the project size or figure out how to mitigate it is the biggest issue that I'd like to address here today. I did bring our Loomis Town Center Implementation Plan, which has recently been completed by MIG. Want to make sure that you have been working with the traffic counts from KD Anderson that are in here, that already show that our existing traffic and plans within the town are of concern at those intersections, so to add additional impacts from yours, exactly how to approach that, something that will take some work to figure out. The town of Loomis has done a lot of work in figuring out those types of impacts with our neighbor, Rockland, has basically a variety of suggestions on how to do that, and we'd like to make sure that in the environmental review, you address either a reduced project size to get it under substantial impacts, or have the impacts addressed. We recognize that under RENA, the county incorporated area is required to develop significant amount of housing on the order of 4,000 units for low-cost and affordable housing, when the question is, is this intended to meet your RENA allocations? Will this be low-cost affordable housing and very low-cost or extremely low-cost? It would be good to address that as part of the environmental review, so the community has a clear understanding of what the intent is. Our position that we are representing in SECOG is that the RENA allocation should be developed where there is mass transit connections to make it easy and convenient for affordable and low-income housing to be easily accessed, so we're not stranding people who don't have enough money to pay decent rent and then have to pay lots of money to get anywhere to get to a job. So, if the intent is to meet your RENA numbers by this project, then we would also urge that consideration be given to how is the mass transit system going to be addressed to make it accessible for those who live there. I did note that you do have the open space area through the center of the project, I believe that's probably the continuation of the creek area that we know affectionately as Unnamed Creek in Loomis. One of these days, we might actually name it in at least Loomis, but it's a creek that goes from Sierra College Boulevard behind the Homewood Project. If any of you are familiar with it, we have three acres that, for that project, were dedicated to the town of Loomis as open space area. That area is going to be connecting up all along that stream corridor up to the, by railies, across from railies, there's an area called Heritage Park, which the town purchased 11 acres that has a pond in it, and our intent is to connect the dots between all these open space areas along that unnamed creek area. Behind railies, on up into some of our developed areas is called the Village Project, and there there will be similar dedicated open space along the creek corridor. And so, to the degree that in your planning for this project, you look at trails and wildlife corridors, those are the things that I was trying to highlight are of consideration for not only people, but the movement of our wildlife. Preserving wildlife in Loomis is a very important part of what is special about Loomis. We believe it's probably special in Penrin as well. So, having both an open access trail and wildlife corridor is important. Along with the wildlife corridor is the fencing issue to preserve wildlife flow. In Loomis, we're very careful about trying to make sure that the fencing is open for allowing wildlife to flow through it, and I know that's more of a project issue perhaps than an environmental impact report, except to the extent you're looking at the impacts on wildlife and species in the area. So, as you get into the project decisions, the fencing and the trails issues would need to be addressed. Those are our primary concerns. The town is developing written comments that we will forward by the deadline. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today and would like to work with the county to deal with the issues that are anticipated. We don't think it's acceptable to have significant unavoidable impacts. We think it should be avoided, either through mitigation or reducing the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, you made reference to a document. Is that document available to the county, or...
It's on the town website. If you go to lumis.ca.gov, on the homepage, we have six key tabs on the middle of the page, one of which is Major Projects. Under Major Projects, it's called the Loomis Town Center Implementation Plan, Phase 1, Volume 2, Appendix D is the KD Anderson traffic information.
What's the date of the document?
The date of this document is June 2010.
That's the latest one?
Correct, that was the adopted document.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Excuse me, hi, I'm Muriel Davis from Penrin, and I was hoping I could get that map back on that EJ had. Can you get that? I wanted to indicate that I could not find on the document how many trees were being destroyed with this project. All I could, all I, I do know that it's, the land's going to be devastated, and I wanted to show that on this. Is it there, the green one? I think the one before this. Yeah, that one. One of the things I don't see, I could not find as being covered in the EIR is the inconsistency of this project with the surrounding area. As you can see here, there's high, you know, expensive homes to the, I don't know if that's north, maybe it's north, and around on the other side, and on...
Could you speak a little bit more into the microphone?
Oh, there's expensive homes all around, and it's a pretty rural area, and the concentration of this development is like, to me, is like putting a cement block in a garden, and it doesn't, doesn't seem like the EIR is covering the issue of its inconsistency with the surrounding environment. I also think it's unacceptable that the EIR is discounting the fact that the, not covering the population, they think it's less-than-significant, whereas I think increasing the population by almost 30% is quite a significant increase. There's, I could not find, the document's pretty big, but I could not find in the EIR the discussion of the cumulative impact of the other projects. Right down, right down by I-80 and Penrin Road is another development that was recently approved, that would have 23 units, which is about 100 people or more, and over by, on Boynton, there's a town home development of over 90 units, which is going to be maybe 350 and 400 homes. It isn't completely developed, but that project and the other projects are approved, they go with any owners that should buy the property, even though, because one of the properties is for sale. And so, these projects are going to stick around, and they have a significant impact on the population of the Penrin area. Also, Bickford Ranch, I know it's a project that's kind of out in the back burner, but it still is a viable project, someone could buy it, and boom, we've got a big population explosion. So, I think population, because of the surrounding projects, should also be included in the EIR. The fact that, I suppose they'll discuss, this might be in ER, but it's such a big document, the cutting down of almost 90% of the land and the trees, I don't know if they're going to talk about the warming. I mean, this is a nice area, and it's usually cool, cooler than Auburn, but if we destroy a lot of trees, that's going to impact... But if we destroy a lot of trees, that's going to impact the, how the, the weather's going to be in Penrin. And my other concern about the EIR is the fact that there's a portion, the five acres on Penrin Road is Zone C2. The whole idea of the community plan was to have that corridor be a mixed use, commercial, professional, and residential in order to benefit the community. And there are some already on there and residents that all benefit the community. This big apartment taking up the whole area doesn't seem like it's following the community plan. And in the community plan, it says that even though it is Zone C2, the plan does not want high density housing. I know there's 10 acres to the left there that is Zone 10 per acre, but the five that's off on the road, I think it would be nice to have that be a park because there's no recreation for, minimal recreation for the people on Boynton and no recreation for the people behind the shopping center. But we need something for our community that benefits the community and follows the plan to put some, a mixed use and putting 150 units in that area. I think the EIR should consider the community plan a little bit more. I thought I had something. And I agreed with everything, everybody else, with the impact on the traffic is going to be horrendous. And I don't believe there are plans to improve the interchange of I-80. There is a comment letter from the Department of Transportation, which I hope you all read that talks about their concerns in the transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Laura McPherson of Penrin. I'm just, I can't believe this is an orchard. This is the second orchard in the area. I guess a area that used to grow fruit that was known all over the world, I guess, is now a growing apartment units. Richard Freeberg and the group, when they did their master plan several years ago and they envisioned a wonderful downtown area that matched the flavor of the area. And it would make us proud of this, this corridor. They never dreamt or envisioned apartment row. I Googled apartments yesterday on the internet and the only ones that I saw of large units were in Rockland and Auburn. And all the comments that came up for the reviews were, don't live here, there's prostitution, there's drugs, the Rockland PD, the Auburn PD live here. Since we're an incorporated area, how in an incorporated area will the police be able to come and patrol that area? And also it said in the, in the EIR that it would be market rent. How do you determine market rent when there aren't any apartments around? Is this going to be a Section 8 area, like the gentleman from Loomis said? And if it is, how will the police be called in and how, how will that be covered? Also, a couple of weeks ago, when there was that big plastics fire in Fairfield with all the pollution, all the big black smoke, the next morning I watched on the news and I was, they were showing where it was settling and where it was cleared and where it was. And there it was again, every time you see an ozone map of an area or smoke or filled, there it is, right between Loomis and Auburn, this hillside here where the smoke settles and it's always the last to clear, the air's ozone is always last to clear. So I think that air mitigation really needs to be addressed and it can't be addressed. So I really think that, that needs, needs to be considered. And if you approve, I was a mail carrier in Auburn, I mean in Penrin for over 10 years and it's a very stable area. And if you approve this project, can you at least make them owner occupied so it's not a big rental unit with the people going in? Most of us have lived there for 10, 20, 30 years. And the trees, every time I've seen where people have come in and chopped the trees down and they were, they were told to plant oak trees, I've never seen an oak tree live the next year and bloom. So I don't know if you have any way to come and see how they're cared for anyway, but they're never, they're never alive the next year that I've seen anyway. I really think that we ought to keep the village, the Dick Freeberg and his group imagined in the area. And also how are the schools going to be impacted? I can't believe that that big a unit wouldn't impact a small Penrin school. My kids went through Penrin and they graduated, they started with 11 in kindergarten and ended up with 45 in eighth grade and they're still friends today. I can't believe when you put 150 units in there that that's not going to impact a small school like Penrin and Loomis. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Well, make sure you put your name down on that piece of paper beside the. Okay, next. No more comments? Okay, well, with that, then I'll close the public hearing. And with that, anybody in the town of Penrin or Loomis or in the area that would like to submit written comments, you're welcome to do that. Submit them to the planning department here and the comments that were made this morning will be considered in the final document. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make comment on the, comments on the, on the trees, the environmental impact report, Chapter Five, Page 19 says tree preservation. The next two or three pages after that talk about trees and the trunk size and what you have to do if they do take, you know, impact a tree and stuff. So I don't know if that's information, it'd be valuable to the lady that, you know, had that question, but that's what, that's where the tree stuff is, at least a portion of it in the EIR.
Okay.
And I think also just one more comment on the, on the Penrin School District, maybe a question for staff, do, are, do the school districts get notified of these EIRs? Because they always usually make comments on it, so you may want to remind them of the deadline or something, you know, so they could make a comment on that issue.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff? Okay, well, we'll go ahead on to our next item, if that's it, folks. And so this next item is going to be Lauren Clark and he's going to give us an update on the Placer County Conservation Plan.
Good morning, Commissioner Johnson, member of the commission. It's a pleasure to be back before the planning commission this morning. We'll wait a second, here it comes, the PowerPoint comes up. This morning, I'm here to give the commissioners an update on a work program that's been going on for quite some time now, actually. The Policy Foundation for this work program, it's all the way back to the 1994 General Plan. When it was adopted, it gave pretty clear direction to county staff that we were to take a comprehensive look at a variety of open space resources in the county, but most importantly, resources related to endangered species and wetlands. In 1998, a work program came forward that ultimately became Placer Legacy. That Placer Legacy work program included some components also dealing with this issue. And then around the year 2000, 2001, the Board of Supervisors started to fund the program that is now known as the Placer County Conservation Plan. So we've been at it for quite some time. What I wanted to do is bring the commission up to speed because we're at some key decision making points and we're moving past sort of data collection and developing some baseline understandings of where we're going with all of this to truly, in the end, a final permit and some final actions over the next couple of years. So as background, the PCCP, as I'll call it, is really a transfer of authority from state and federal government to local government. It's not intended to be new regulation, it's not intended to take the county in a direction that's different than we're all today. It really is saying that the regulations, State and Federal Endangered Species Act, Federal Clean Water Act, that are administered by agencies outside of Placer County, that if we can come to an agreement on a plan, that they will allow local government to administer those regulations on their behalf. And what we get is a series of permits. Incidental take permits for both the State and Federal Endangered Species Act with the California Department Efficient Game to manage what happens within a stream bed and bank, that's a stream bed alteration agreement. There's a possibility of some transfer of authority there, not complete. And then under the Federal Clean Water Act, there's two elements, the fill or the discharge of fill into what they call Waters of the United States, or more commonly called wetlands, as well as issues related to water quality. This is largely in response to growth, as most things are that come under our purview in the land use world. When we look at Western Placer County, and particularly the unincorporated area in the city of Lincoln, those are the two entities that are pursuing the PCCP. So we're not alone in this. Terms of the jurisdictions with land use authority, it's the county and the city of Lincoln. The area in blue on this figure represents with a fairly aggressive growth projection. So it is one that is fairly assertive about what could happen in Western Placer County. Net new population, 224,000 persons, net new jobs, 153,000, 90,000 households. What's key in the PCCP isn't so much those numbers, it's how you predict that those numbers will cause an effect on the physical environment of Western Placer County. So if I took those 224,000 persons and put them in a Manhattan-style condominium project, we'd have a small footprint with a lot of people living in it. Because we trend towards suburban forms of development, we have a larger footprint than you would predict in, say, downtown Manhattan. So we also not only have to predict how much growth, but we also have to predict the type of growth, where it's distributed, and then what is that footprint. And in this figure, what you see is, is the distribution of existing land use. Urban and suburban is relatively small today, 8% of the total land area essentially west of Auburn, it's about 225,000 acres in size. Rural residential, as it exists today, a fairly large footprint, almost twice the size of our urban footprint. And then a lot of open lands, cropland in its various forms, forestlands and natural lands make up the vast majority of what we see west of Auburn. Not only is it the county and the city of Lincoln, but we're also partnered with the Placer County Water Agency. The dialogue with them was initiated over the water transfer that they want out of the Sacramento River, essentially trading American River Water for Sacramento River Water. That causes growth. Those indirect effects become the burden of PCWA. We can accommodate that because we are the agency, local government, the county and the city, that deal with the direct effects. Also, what's been a very important part of the work program is the Placer Parkway Project, which connects Highway 65 out to 9970 to the west. That is a covered activity, as we call it in the PCCP, meaning they will get their permits through this program rather than as a standalone agency. This is a figure that shows the geographic footprint, so the area in blue, which is predominantly west of Auburn, the areas in gray are the non-participating cities. So city of Auburn, town of Loomis, city of Rockland, city of Roseville are not participating in the outcome of the PCCP. Unincorporated Placer, along that blue boundary line, as well as the city of Lincoln depicted current city limits in that sort of tan color. 31 species are being addressed. The majority of the species we're not familiar with. There's five plants you've probably never heard of. There's quite a few little bugs and other invertebrates that are relatively uncommon in terms of our day-to-day existence. Conversely, something that we obviously are aware of in our community salmon and steelhead, which are listed under the Federal Endangered Species Act, are covered. The one that we spend the majority of our time on are three invertebrates, really two invertebrates, both of which inhabit the Vernapool landscape of Western Placer County. Vernapool tadpole shrimp, Vernapool fairy shrimp. The vast majority of this work program has centered around addressing impacts to those species. We're not alone in this work program. This is occurring all over Northern California. In this figure, you can see what's happening immediately around us. Yuba Sutter have a joint effort. Yolo County has been at this longer than we have and as has Sacramento County. They've been at this for South Sac longer than we have. San Joaquin finished plan a few years ago. Solano County Water Agency is working on a plan. East Contra Costa recently finished a plan. Butte has just started a plan. Santa Clara is well into their plan. So a lot of conservation planning occurring in Northern California. The physical geography, it's the west slope of the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, to put it simply. About 1,500 feet in elevation, down to about a couple hundred feet in elevation at the extreme west end. It's the entire transect of that foothill environment. You know, Placer County is very unique, not only in California, but quite frankly, in the world in terms of the diversity of our landscape. Over 50% of all the natural communities that exist in the state of California, counting the desert, counting the, you know, tidal areas, counting the shoreline, over 50% of the natural communities that exist in the state, exist in this county. So California is one of the most diverse places on the world. Placer County shares a large percentage of that diversity. We're covering about one-third of that on the west slope of the PCCP with this particular boundary. The area is bisected by a number of streams, as well as two rivers, the American River on the south, the Bear River on the north, where we share boundaries with Yuba, Nevada. The streams are most relevant because that's the area where we have the majority of our land use authority. The Dry Creek System drains into the Natomas East Main Drain, which drains into the American River. That connection allows salmon and steelhead to get into the Dry Creek System. So today, we still find salmon and steelhead, predominantly salmon, on Miners Ravine, Linda Creek, Main Stem Dry Creek, Seeker Ravine, Ian, the Loomis Basin. Pleasant Grove, largely a warm water fishery, lot of wastewater discharge. Auburn Ravine is a cold water fishery, salmon and steelhead are present, a very robust fishery, cold water, well-oxygenated. Markham Ravine, largely an ag tailwater, largely a warm water fishery. Coon Creek, salmon and steelhead, steel, even though it's warm, there was shaduk sighted on the creek just this year. And then Yankee Slough Bear River to the north. Lot of conservation activities have occurred over the last 10 to 15 years. Placer Legacy is a part of that. The county has been directly involved via Legacy on acquisitions. You also have Placer Land Trust, emerging as one of the largest landowners in Western Placer County. But also state and federal programs, individual farmers have entered into programs such as the NRCS Wetlands Program and others. All told, there's about 16,000 acres of that 225 that is in some sort of permanent conservation status today. This is not the ball fields, the soccer fields, but true lands or lands that are truly in conservation for their natural resources. Not only are we looking at the landscape from this watershed perspective and understanding things that are occurring at the shed level, but we're also very interested in what's happening down within that stream bed and bank and what's happening within the flood plain. So a very significant part of the plan not only looks at land conservation within large tracts of areas to account for endangered species, but also as these streams enter into the foothills, they start to fragment and split in this dendritic pattern, they become very relevant, as they are today in county policy and county code. We're also interested in what happens to our neighbor to the west. As I mentioned, Yuba Sutter are involved in a similar effort. Salmon and steelhead cannot enter the Auburn Ravine or Coon Creek System unless they come up the Cross Canal, which is that feature that extends down to the Sacramento River and up the East Side Canal and into our system. So we've had a number of meetings at the staff level, as well as with Supervisor Weigand, Supervisor Gallagher in Sutter County about joint interest, joint efforts. If there are things that we can do in Sutter County to ensure fish passage, we want to be able to have our plans spill out into Sutter County. We're also interested in that area in pink, up in the northern portion of this figure, which is a portion of Sutter County where Coon Creek leaves Placer, enters Sutter, comes back in Placer and goes back to Sutter again. It's about 1,700 acres in there. That's all about watershed integrity, connectivity, sort of maintaining an open space corridor in an area where Sutter County is similarly interested in farmland conservation as well as endangered species. So good inter-county relationships being developed around this. Lot of what we're doing is to fix mistakes of the past. Most of these mistakes are made at the sort of the state and federal level. They probably wouldn't call them mistakes as it is, just their prior regulatory trend. But we certainly all believe we can do better than we've done in the past. Fragmentation, degradation, resource isolation, over-intensification are all really sort of the result of a pattern of regulation that seeks to, one, avoid, almost always, leave it behind. And if you can't leave it behind, mitigate. And a lot of these mitigation programs result in this sort of issue of intensification. And I'll give you some examples. Typical rural residential subdivision, unincorporated Placer County, foothill area, four to five acre parcels. The federal requirements are you avoid and minimize impacts on federal waters of the U.S. As a consequence, these patchy little wetlands get left behind. Sometimes it's an easement in a backyard, sometimes it's a common area a lot. You frequently see these as they come before you, which are the consequence of consultation with the federal agencies. Leave them behind has been the practice, avoid and minimize. You also see the consequences of 10 years removed, individuals who have to manage this resource in their backyard and having issues with it, whether it's mosquitoes, whether it's overgrowing, water quality concerns, or they simply. whether it's mosquitoes, whether it's overgrowing, water quality concerns, or they simply want to take ownership of this thing that may have a post and cable separator, but it is really something that they're paying property tax on. So a lot of issues evolve around these small patchy resources that get left behind. At the larger scale, large-scale avoidance, you've seen even in urban settings. This is the Roseville Galleria there, in a large vernal pool preserve immediately to the south. That's not an infill project that you see waiting to be developed. That is a permanent preserve of vernal pools being managed. Similarly with Del Webb, Roseville, the figure in the center. And a lot of streams get avoided, but they're completely bordered by urban edges. The floodplain does not have its ability to function, and they really serve as a place for stormwater discharge, frequently untreated stormwater discharge. More issues of avoidance, this is an example around twelve bridges, where it actually is a little bit better because the stream itself has a little bit of an upland edge to it before you actually get into the stream bed. And other areas of avoidance, such as the figure in the bottom, you can't quite see, but there are vernal pools created all up and down that. It's a power line corridor, it's an area that couldn't be developed, so it ends up being used for, in this case, compensatory replacement of vernal pools. They're packed in there pretty tight, they're surrounded within an urban environment. And then intensification, it's economies of scale. If I've got to mitigate, and I've got a piece of ground to mitigate on, I'm going to put as much mitigation as I can put there. This is an area around Sheridan, just north of Wise Road on Highway sixty-five, Nader Road area. The figure to the left is a photo of the property as a grassland in two thousand and two. No vernal pools present, a minor tributary of Yankee Slough on the property. Figure to the right is after Roseville Projects had a mitigation requirement, and the site is packed with vernal pools that historically were not present. It's an unnatural environment, it's a heavily managed environment, but economies of scale and sort of the current regulatory condition results in projects like this. And then lastly is the use of mitigation banks. They bring tremendous benefit, but they also bring that cost of resource of intensification, doing a lot in a small area, and typically a lot of human intervention for their management. So what we have prepared is a document. This document was released to the agencies in February of this year. This is the basic set of chapters. What's important in all of this is really chapter number two, covered activities. That is what we predict we will need regulatory coverage for between now and the year twenty-sixty, fifty years of permit coverage. Chapter four is the impact assessment. Here's our activities, here's what we think they're going to do to the environment. Chapter five is the strategy, it's the plan. Everything evolves around chapter five, and then chapter six is really the zoning ordinance. It's the code, it's the how are you going to mitigate? It's the nuts and bolts of the plan. And then the other chapters are largely gearing towards implementation. How do you govern, how do you pay for, how do you manage, how do you monitor? We're largely spending our time on chapter five with the wildlife agencies. The overall priority of the four or five major natural communities is conservation. And I'll use two words, conservation mitigation. Conservation, preserve it in place, manage it in place, manage it for what it is. You might restore it a little bit, but by and large, it's good, preserve it, take care of it. Mitigation is you're replacing something. I take out a wetland, I replace a wetland. I might also conserve one, but I'm going to mitigate for it. Federal law requires no net loss for wetlands, which requires mitigation. For oak woodlands, we are de-emphasizing mitigation. This is a trend that the county's been on for a couple of years now. You heard just a few minutes ago testimony about oak woodlands or oak trees being planted, and they're dead and dying a couple of years later. Survey work all up and down the state of California that was done in the mid-two thousands resulted in a Senate bill being passed, thirteen thirty-four, which resulted in new statutory language in the SEQA statute that is encouraging conservation over mitigation, if not outright requiring it. So what you'll see in Placer County with the PCCP is an acceptance of some amount of loss. No net loss is not acknowledged as being the driver here. We will accept an amount of loss in favor of putting our resources into land conservation, management, and some amount of restoration. Many areas of the county, there's too many oaks, particularly from a fuel load management standpoint. So emphasis is on conservation, fuels, management, regeneration. Vernal pool grasslands, and wetlands in particular, you have to replace them. You take one out, you've got to put one back. Federal law is going to mandate that. So it's both preservation as well as mitigation. The grasslands themselves, the emphasis on conservation and restoration, manage what we have the best way we can. Riparian is an area that we believe we can do better than status quo. We really don't have a large impact projected, but there's tremendous riparian restoration potential. It's a value added to the PCCP, it's a carrot that we can sort of hang out in front of the wildlife agencies. Wetlands, like the vernal pool wetlands, you have to replace them. Streams, similar to riparian, we don't directly impact streams all that much, so it's more of an emphasis on watershed activities. Keep the sediment out, keep the bad water out, the stream will function better. When you look at the PCCP, it's more than just setting objectives. It is the physical footprint of conservation is what the plan is built around. GIS is obviously the perfect tool for evaluating the landscape. No surprise that the areas with the least amount of development, the fewest roads, the fewest people, have the greatest opportunity for conservation. And some areas have the greatest opportunity for restoration. You start to build a plan around those geographic areas of the county. So again, no surprise that those areas of the Loomis Basin, which might have been an oak woodland a hundred and fifty years ago, we find at that same elevation, and say in the Big Hill Garden Bar area, oak woodlands that are roadless and relatively intact today. You're not going to mitigate in the Loomis Basin at a large scale. You're going to conserve in the Garden Bar Big Hill for those resources. So there is a geographic trade-off that is fairly substantial, as opposed to the project level. It's now at the larger scale. This is the reserve map that's been on the street since about a year now. The areas in pale yellow is where growth is emphasized, both infill, ongoing fragmentation of rural residential, as well as new urban. The areas in dark green are already preserved today, and we're trying to build around those as increasing on existing success. The areas in light green is the area within which you would build a future reserve system. So it's not all of it, but a good portion of it. And the areas in blue are those streams as they pass in and out of the reserve area and into the foothills, literally into many backyards. Just some basic numbers, existing protected lands, about sixteen thousand acres. The reserve acquisition area, about eighty thousand acres. Potential future growth is a hundred and eighteen thousand. That includes the existing growth footprint. So we're not going to grow about a hundred and eighteen thousand, we're going to grow around forty to fifty thousand is the guess. But the total footprint of existing and new growth is about a hundred and eighteen thousand. In terms of the resources as they exist out there today, Western Placer County is really dominated by two resources. Oak woodland and grassland accounts for over fifty percent of the footprint. As previously mentioned, urban is about eight percent, a relatively small footprint, around twenty-two thousand today. And then ag, kind of comes and goes, the numbers. One day, something might be ag, irrigated pasture. The next year, if it's dry pasture, it's going to sort of be categorized as habitat. Wetlands, very small footprint, riparian, very small footprint. We've calculated the impact in ten-year increments out to the year twenty-sixty. So you can see at the year twenty-twenty, on the valley floor, of the various communities that are affected, grassland, vernal pool being at the top of the list, we start at about thirty-eight hundred acres of impact. At the cumulative number at the year twenty-sixty, around twenty-seven thousand acres of impact on the valley floor. That tells us not only how much, but where and what type of mitigation we're going to need over time. What's most important is by far, it's a vernal pool grassland impact, full of endangered species issues. In the foothills, it's a direct impact and an indirect impact. Building a house on ten acres probably has about a two-acre direct impact. By the time I have the roads, the barn, the house, the swimming pool, whatever else I might put there, it's trending around two to three acres of effect. The indirect effect is really the full ten acres. So you see that in these figures, about twelve thousand acres of direct effect, but the indirect impact is actually even larger. It's about eighteen thousand acres for a total of thirty. Rural residential has a large footprint of impact. Because though, for the most part, our rural residential is in an area already fragmented, the impact is lessened. If we were moving wholesale into an intact blue oak woodland and dropping one to five units, or one to five acres per unit, yes, we would have a very significant issue to address, but we don't. Chapter six, as I mentioned, is where a lot of the rules are. Here you see by community type, a lot of ratios. The ratios are largely drawn from the map. So we didn't say we want this ratio. We really said, here's the map we think can work. What does that map tell us our mitigation ratios are? So we really used conclusions on how much we had for impact, how much we needed for conservation. Can that landscape work? Once those conclusions were reached, then the map really told us what the ratios were. And then there's lots and lots and lots of rules behind these numbers in terms of how they're applied. One of the areas that is essential to this plan, we think, and it's one of the unique areas that Placer County is coordinating on, compared to other similar efforts, not only here, but elsewhere throughout the United States, is a twofold relationship of local policy, local ordinances that have been on the books for years, Endangered Species Act, and then what we call here the CARP, which is an acronym for the County Aquatic Resources Program, wetlands. Whether it's state, federal, local, wetlands are an issue that are oftentimes not addressed. Most HCPs, NCCPs do not pick up wetlands. So you solve all your Endangered Species Act problems, but the US Army Corps of Engineers is still over there with independent permitting authority. That's happened with many, many, many plans. And then they still have some say as to what you do, and it results in a disconnect between your conservation goals and the regulatory mandate of an independent agency. There is a regulatory overlap, there is a policy overlap. The PCCP has from day one tried to fold that in and make it part of one plan. And in addition to that, has always been the presence of our general plan and community plans. Placer County has had an opinion about these resources. That opinion has been expressed as policy for well over twenty years now. That captures not only what's happening at the state and federal level, but it also picks up what we have said is of interest to this community. On the carpet self, the good news with that particular mess is that at the end over here in this yellow box, that's really the primary point, is a person can come to this counter and get a federal wetlands permit. For smaller effects, the things that you would see on a day-to-day basis, as opposed to, say, the big specific plans. Those folks, if I've got an endangered species in a wetland on my property, I got county government, I got state water resources control board, I got state fish and game, I have NOAA fisheries, I have the US Fish and Wildlife Service. EPA could have an opinion on that, and I could probably rattle off a few more if I have wetlands in a perennial stream on my property. What that thing at the end says, all of that happens here, including those actions, those federal actions related to wetlands, which can be particularly difficult to manage. Won't get into the details, but we've had to organize streams and wetlands beyond just the simple language that we have in Placer County today, into language that begins to mirror state and federal regulation. And by and large, what we're looking at is that the stream system is that which is occurring within the active floodplain. So it's not just the stream bed and bank itself, but it's its relationship to the floodplain. There's different rules that apply across that stream system, but it's a very broad-based, almost watershed-level approach to the resource. Without getting into the details, two types of permits, a programmatic general permit. We have whole permit authority, we have a local ordinance that we adopt. County code says wetlands are regulated by Placer County. It mirrors federal law. At a larger scale, we do all the processing, the federal government issues the permit. So we fold it into the process that you will see, but in the end, the feds still issue the permit based upon the direction and the decisions that happen within this body and the zoning administrator. To get that deal, three things have to happen. You have to avoid wetlands at the landscape scale. As you recall, one of the historic trends of the past was we avoid it at the project scale. Those patchy little wetlands that get left behind, it can be a nice amenity, they can also be a problem. They provide a water quality benefit, but they really aren't serving any wildlife or habitat benefit. They might recharge groundwater, but are we really getting sort of a large amount of recharge compared to, say, what you would get out of stream conservation? So what the feds are saying is, we're willing to look at avoidance and minimization, not at the parcel scale, but now at the landscape scale. All of Western Placer County. If you avoid at that scale, we will no longer require avoidance and minimization at the project scale. That's a big, big change in terms of their thinking. Low-impact development standards is just another way of saying address water quality. Terms of the flashiness of storm events, retain it, but retain it in a sort of a distributed pattern across the landscape, not just within, say, a detention basin, but also treat it. Bio-swales, different types of pervious pavements, things like that. LID is common throughout the Pacific Northwest, LID is certainly common in the Tahoe Basin. LID is starting to emerge in the Bay Area, it's coming here, we are simply folding it into the PCCP. And then lastly, avoid the streams. Not just structural impacts, which has been the trend of Placer County, but true buffers, sort of no activity zones, particularly under larger streams where there's an active floodplain.
How are you going to do that? For a long time, we've had the hundred-year floodplains that we've put as a limitation on the ability to deal with the flood. Will this make that change somehow?
We haven't yet gotten into all of the policies and ordinances, but for example, the language in the general plan on hundred-year floodplain. It basically says, do your best to stay out of the floodplain. It doesn't say you have to stay out of the floodplain. And I think what you'll find with the PCCP is similar language, it won't be an outright prohibition, but there's going to be a limitation, and if you cause change within the floodplain, there's going to be a mitigation requirement to replace that loss. Historically, what we've been concerned about is flood flow, making sure that the water passes, that we don't increase it, that we don't change its elevation, things like that. It's been related to, say, fire life safety, you know, concerns about structural impacts. Now there'd be an ecological component to that as well. So if you were to take a hundred-year floodplain and fully develop it for passive recreational uses, whatever that ecological function was, is probably gone. In the past, you really didn't mitigate for that as long as the flood flow issue was addressed. In the future, you would have to address that.
And I kind of snickered when you were talking about the areas that were left behind because we've seen that over and over and over here. How will that change? I mean, for a while, we had easements, people had easements through their backyards, and that's where they would go down and moat and take out the posts and so on. And then the policy seemed to become, well, we're going to make these into lot As. And so that will be a responsibility of the homeowners association. And I've heard comments like you talk about the mosquitoes are a problem, the cattails grow up, et cetera, et cetera. If some project now is coming before us and they have one of these wet areas that would have qualified as a lot A in the past, what will happen now?
Under the rules of the PCCP, you will still look at avoidance minimization onsite, but you'll be able to look at it with all of the discretion as to whether or not it makes sense. Today, avoidance minimization is really the only rule, and you have to leave it behind. And it's a fairly rare circumstance that you get to completely impact it and mitigate elsewhere. With the PCCP, you will have complete discretion to do that. So the areas that will largely get set aside in the future would have a relationship to the stream zone. Because remember, the stream zone is still the place that they said, if you avoid that, that's good, that's our priority. If I've got a functioning stream zone, an active floodplain, and there happens to be some sort of perennial seasonal marsh within that floodplain, you would absolutely say, yes, the floodplain's protected, that seasonal wetland's going to be protected. If I've got some isolated water outside of that stream zone, and today we would say that patchy little wetland would be a common area lot, those would be gone in the future. Because you avoid it at the landscape scale elsewhere. So it's a geographic trade-off that you are better managing a large reserve system with wetlands inside that large reserve system than managing a bunch of patchy little wetlands that got left behind. They haven't been able to do that because they haven't had a plan that sort of accounts for that. And this would be probably the first plan in the United States that is attempting to do that, if we pull it off.
Great theory, be interested to see how it gets applied.
Well, and the good news is, the agencies have completely agreed that this is an approach that should be evaluated, tested, and if it looks good, implemented. So there's been no obstacle other than, you know, just the sheer difficulty of working on this, of getting that done.
Where are you on this plan? Seems you've been working on this for years.
I will jump to, we can skip restoration. Suffice it to say, there's a lot of restoration potential in Western Placer County is the essential point here. The numbers are worth mentioning. The numbers are worth mentioning. It's a very expensive thing to implement, one point five seven billion dollars is the one-time cost. Acquisition is about one point three, restoration about a hundred and fifty million, contingency one point five seven billion. What's important to that, again, is that this is not a new regulation that's causing that. What we're saying is that one point seven, one point five, one point six billion is managed now by local government. People are still mitigating out there, whether without the PCCP. Arguably, they're mitigating at a higher level. We're simply saying we're going to start to manage that mitigation ourselves. The more relevant issue to local government is at year twenty sixty, the eight point four million dollars a year it takes to run the program. That's forever without utilizing the general fund. So, while the one point five is of concern, those are mitigation payments. That number will go up or down depending upon the amount of growth that occurs. People will mitigate more or less. The amount of land we have to manage in perpetuity has an annual cost, and that's obviously for us of greater concern. Governance, local government still has its permitting authority, just like you do today, but now, as these issues come to you, they won't just be county policy and SEQA. County policy, SEQA, state and federal Endangered Species Act and wetlands laws will be part of your decision-making. Placer Conservation Authority would be a joint powers authority, no regulatory authority. They get the money, they manage the money, they manage the land, they buy the land, they restore it, they monitor it. They're sort of the function that's responsible for the landscape of conservation. And then the wildlife agencies slip to a monitoring status. They track you. Are you meeting the objectives of the program? Are you adhering to the rules? And then to answer your question, Jerry, next steps. The plan has been out there since February. The majority of our time has been spent on that conservation strategy. That's really where the deal is. Looks like we have two more meetings. We're meeting with the agencies weekly now. By the end of this month, first of September, we'll understand what their opinion is of the deal and all of it, all of the issues that surround that. We have an ad hoc committee, which is two elected members of Placer County, Supervisors Yuler and Wiegand, two elected council members from Lincoln, Spencer Short, Council Member Cosgrove, Tom Cosgrove. They meet on a fairly regular basis. They're sort of that first tier of policymaker, policy review, policy opinion that we then manage as staff. We're going to take the wildlife agencies' issues to them in total, recommendations as how they can be managed, get some direction from that group. If we can reach an agreement on this chapter five, then all these other elements of the work program start to fall into place pretty quick. And it turns into a fairly traditional work program, similar to what you would see with a community plan. We'll have a policy document, we'll have some standards in terms of how you mitigate, we'll have a finance plan in terms of how you pay for it, we'll have an implementation agreement, which reads like a development agreement. Here's the contract that we're going to sign. All of that takes about two years to put all that together in an EIR, EIS, once we agree on this sort of key issue around the conservation strategy. So, that's the wild card in terms of timing, is how quickly can we conclude that negotiation? Once that concludes, then it's a fairly traditional two-year work program to complete it. So, two plus is what I would say where we're sitting right now. Any other questions, commissioners?
Why do you, why do you think the cities didn't want to participate?
You know, different answers from different ones, and certainly don't want to, want to speak for them. The city of Auburn really doesn't have much in the way of endangered species or wetland issues. Relatively small footprint of growth and maybe one invertebrate animal up here that would be of concern, the valley.
The planning department?
So, Auburn's just not a big issue for them. Tanna Loomis, Secret Ravine, Salmon and Steelhead, some riparian, but again, not a big regulatory footprint associated with substantial growth. City of Rockland is relatively landlocked. They don't have a new increment of growth that's geographic within the landscape. So, for them, while it's still growing, it's mostly infill types of growth, and they believe they can manage those permits because they're relatively small in scope. City of Colfax, outside the planned boundary, and then City of Roseville, which is where the majority of the dialogue has taken place, they are pursuing at the specific plan level their own permits. And as such, they have been in an independent regulatory process that is theirs, essentially, and doesn't necessarily cross over into the PCCP even though we are, we are looking at the same landscape. The county, unincorporated county, City of Lincoln, when you look at the growth projections out to twenty sixty, the majority of new growth goes to those two jurisdictions. So, it's a diminishing amount of growth to everybody else and an increasing percentage of growth to the county and the city. So, it is landing on the two entities that have the biggest burden in the future compared to the burden of, say, the past twenty years.
Thank you. More questions?
Yes, a comment. We have a letter here from City of Roseville from, from Rob Jensen about the, the, our, what's it, what's it called?
The recent farms area?
Yeah, recent farms. And that whole area, I'm familiar with that. That was, that was purchased and set aside for drainage and for flood control. And how will that impact the plan? Or have you had a chance to read this letter? I guess you have. It was only dated a couple of days ago.
Yeah, recent farms is roughly in here, this area, along Pleasant Grove Creek.
Right.
It's an area that the city purchased five, six, seven years ago.
Something like that.
And they purchased, purchased it largely for the benefits to flood control, dealing with impacts on Sutter County.
That's correct.
It has potential for recreational development as well, and then small portions of it, or at least one small portion was set aside, I think, as a part of a vernal pool preserve. The property is in the unincorporated of the area of the county, owned by the city, but not yet annexed by the city. So, there's been an ongoing discussion with the city for, for quite some time about that relationship. The county continues to show it within the PCCP maps because it hasn't been annexed to the city. The way the information exchange has gone in the past is at such time that it is annexed, then we would convert it to what is depicted as gray or non-participating city. With the Roseville annexations on the west side, those negotiations, my understanding moving forward now, I would expect that we will see, beyond this letter, which was sent to you, and this is a non-action item today for you, that that would be a request that they'll put back before the Board of Supervisors in the next few months.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren.
And let me see, I guess that does it for us today. Thank you, folks. Meetings adjourned.